Welcome, everybody, to the July 9th Eugene City Council Work Session. And tonight, we have an important topic, one that I think is both important and long anticipated, and dealing with City Hall. And my only comment before we start, I'll turn it over to the manager, is that one of the things for me is, it's always been hard for me to tell other people in our downtown to fix up their buildings when ours looks the way it looks. So I'm very happy to see us starting down this road. City Manager?
Thanks, Mayor. And as you know, right before we get started on the City Hall discussion, we wanted to have about a 10-minute little recap of your meeting management software. So if you don't mind, we'll have a couple of folks, Anthony with the company and Peter Shum. Yeah, sorry. And Peter is actually on our staff, and so, Peter, why don't you introduce Anthony?
Welcome.
Well, Mayor and City Councilors, I'm glad to come here to present to you entry one, representing Cyra Technologies. They are the company that we have selected after months of staff participation and review of different software offerings, and we decided to partner with them, and we signed a contract in the end of March. And we're just starting the project right now, as we speak. So he's here to present the project and the product and the offerings that the company's offering to us.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You don't need one if you're sitting at the table.
Well, thank you. Appreciate everyone here, and we're very excited from Cyra Technologies to be here and to partner with you and to kind of collaborate with your agenda process. And so, a little high overview of what I'm going to do tonight for a presentation is a little quick PowerPoint, and then we'll go over to a client site that is very much like what the City of Eugene has chosen as their template. So with that, if we can get the lights to dim a little bit there, I'm going to go ahead and fire up my PowerPoint here.
You only have maybe about seven minutes, so I'm just letting you know.
We'll go through this really quick, real quickly here. So just a little bit about our company profile and kind of just where we're from, we're from, actually, Salt Lake City, Utah. Our company was established in '83, and our primary focus is state and local government, so that's really our focus. And move on here, this is not working. A little bit about the process of what you have purchased here at the City of Eugene is some of the modules to the left here that just flew in here from the left there. The main one that we're really going to look at today is the Agenda Mobile-to-Go for you people with the iPad application, to be able to get your agendas electronically and your documents electronically. So with that, I'll go ahead and move on real quickly here to get going in sync here with your meeting here. So some of the features of the product here is depicted here in this slide. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time here because I want to show you the real core of the iPad application, but just a little bit about the search and retrieval of documents. Our application will allow your offices to be able to access your documents that come in from the public, some of your titles that are associated with your agenda. Any kind of information that's associated with the agenda will be searchable, will be tied to a meeting date, so you'll be able to find that very, very easily. Another aspect of search and retrieval is the public access that the public will have to be able to get legislative history with meetings as far as, you know, what items are tied together and what have you. So that's a really great aspect to have for the publics to be able to get that type of information. The data storage, the data storage you guys have chosen is in the cloud, so to speak, as I'm sure you've heard that terminology before. The data center actually resides in Utah. That data center is what we call a colo, and it is compliant with all the major certifications, as you can see there. Most importantly is the backup of that data is protected, utilizing those certification bodies extensively. So we take great pride in making sure that that data is secured properly. A little bit about cost savings, cost savings just below there. Of course, paperless always is a key thing to have in cost savings. A little bit aspects of workflow as far as approving items through a process instead of handing paper to paper, desk to desk is going to be a cost savings for the city here. Public records requests, again, another aspect of cost savings that will help tremendously by being able to access those records very quickly, be able to email them because they're in electronic format, will speed up the process. And then, of course, at the very end here is summary minutes. We're actually utilizing, going from a verbatim-style minutes to a summary-style minutes, which will help your city as far as full-time positions help that aspect of it as well. I'm going to quickly go through here to the iPad, which is, I think, the most important here tonight here. And, of course, this is the application that will allow you to have your electronic agenda through your iPad. I'm going to go through here really quickly here and show you just a little glimpse of what it's going to look like. This is your homepage, your home desktop with the icon Agenda To Go, is what we're calling it. And when you log into the system, this is what you will see because you all will have private aspects of that agenda on your iPad, so you do have authentication to log into. You do have a search criteria for meeting types and meeting dates. So this screen will depict that. This allows you to select your meeting types. It's just an example of how a meeting type would show up. And then, of course, you have your dates that you can choose as well. After you choose that criteria, you will be displayed a screen here of the meetings that are available to you. I should have gotten a clicker because I'm having to be in just one spot. After the search criteria does come up, it does show you the dates of the meetings that are available to you. When you open up a meeting, you will see the Agenda to your left here, show up just as if it was posted out to the web to your public. You will have a notes capability to be able to make notes. This My Files area is an area that you can attach files yourself that are associated with that item, so to remind you of maybe a sort to bring up during the council meeting, or maybe just to remind you in general. That is available there. And then, of course, your attachments will be listed here as they are with the agenda and will be public displayed as well on the website. If I click on a particular item, you notice that the attachments did show up here. As we move through this, I can now utilize the iPad to make notes up here and take notes. When your notes are done and you move away from that item, you notice that the item is highlighted in yellow here to allow you to know that you do have notes associated with that item, so when you go back for review at your council meeting, you'll remember which ones have notes. Do offer that functionality. And then, again, if I click back onto that item again and I open up an attachment, this is what I'll display. And, of course, this is a makeshift attachment just for display purposes, but this is an open attachment for your review.
Can we ask a question? Should we go here or wait until the end?
Only just seven minutes.
Gotta work fast.
Do what I can with my memory here.
What I'd like to do is actually go out to a client's website that we have that you chose as a template to display here, and this is what the City of Woodehr has as their public-out-facing webpage. This is what it looks like in their city, and this is the kind of the template that you have chosen to show for your city, and this is what the template will display is the agenda, the videos, and the minutes. We're actually going to go ahead and click on this video link here to show you what the agenda and video looks like. What it's doing is, I'm going to go ahead and stop that just for a second. It's showing you the agenda and video-associated items in hyperlink text here to the left. And if I go ahead and click down here real quickly on an item, what it does is, if you watch this jump to screen here, it'll jump directly to that, I don't know if you can see it, it's very dark, but it jumped to that point in the meeting by nearly just clicking on that item so that all you're going to hear is that particular item in the audio-video format. And it does that with all items that you click on. Down here on the lower part of the screen, which I can't get to for some reason, there's another area here, why that's not doing that, but I think the projector's giving us a problem here as far as seeing the lower screen, but the files that we saw in the iPad display area will show that as well. So you'll see your attachments below here, and you're able to click on those and see those attachments associated with those particular items. Questions?
Yeah. Is there any, does this support any sort of hyperlink to indexing by subject type? So, for example, if we were going to have a particular discussion, let's say, about City Hall, where we might have had a discussion about City Hall at previous meetings, there would be a capacity to link to other minutes or other videos or other agenda item summaries of previous work sessions on those same keyword indexing?
Yes. And as I said in that earlier PowerPoint presentation, you are able to search by, the application was built on a core EDMS system-
Right.
...which depicts all of the documents in a repository.
Okay.
And within those repositories, it's taking every one of those documents and it's OCR-ing them, which is optical character recognition-
Right.
-and it's taking all that data in there. So anytime you do a search out in the, provided you have permissions, you're doing a search out there, you're able to find items throughout that aspect and be able to pull up those items by particular word criteria.
Okay.
I don't know if that's going to answer your question or not.
It doesn't index specifically, but it's searchable in a fashion where you can access some of that stuff.
Indexing-wise, there is a tool that is in place that has an area of where you can meta-
Yeah.
-add metadata to particular items, so if you utilize that search criteria-
Right.
-and then you take those files-
Tag them yourself.
-and tag them with the indexing. Because we're a EDMS core solution-
Right.
-we offer that in a different area, not in the Agenda Plus module, but it's in a different area, but it is with the system.
Okay. Thanks.
And then Alan?
No.
Okay, Pat's fine.
Well, I have the same question, but I'll follow up. So do we have the complete system? So you're just showing us one little part of it.
Right, I'm just showing a very small portion. You haven't actually seen the clerks area where they actually do the search capabilities. This is just the kind of the public side and the kind of the iPad side.
So right now, so this is all on cloud-based, so right now-
It is.
So we don't have to download any documents to our computer and upload them to Dropbox like we do right now on new offices.
No, not with this iPad app. That is correct. That is a great question.
You do it all from the cloud.
Yes, yes, because when you, as I showed you in one of the screens there, you hit that download to the iPad, it pulls all those documents to your iPad so that you're not utilizing and doing the Dropbox and what have you. It's all done behind the scenes from the cloud.
And what Mike was getting at was, we both started doing this a couple of years ago, but we both create like electronic filing cabinet by subject area, whether it be new City Hall or-
Land use or-
Land use or-
Public safety.
Ordinances, public safety, whatever. And so, we dump all of our documents in there, and whenever we want, we can search on that and they all pop up.
So I think that the EDMS metadata tagging would be a good functionality for you people to be able to utilize, maybe create a cabinet for, you know, each district.
It's self choosing, it's user choosing on the tagging.
You can utilize the index fields and set it up so it's self choosing, or you could do a dropdown and have a choose list to you from. You can do it either way. It's customizable.
Or can staff do that as part of the, create the user?
Staff could do that if they had the administrative rights capability of doing that and had some education on how to do that, yes. It is configurable by staff.
And if they thought, exactly like I thought in my computer, my filing system.
Well, I mean, you know, and there are a lot of times that they do discovery and then let the admin people create that for them so that it's not too confusing, and then you decide how you want that created through discovery.
Cool. Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Very impressive.
Thank you.
The manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll have Murnee come on up and sit in the hot seat.
Oh, yeah. When is this, is this live? Is this ready to go? Are we already doing it?
There is a multi-phase project, and the first part we are completing for end of September.
Let's try to have it be online.
To be online, but the iPad functionality will be a little bit later.
It'll be later.
So it'll be after September.
Like September 2nd?
It will probably be October, November-ish.
Okay. We can use the Dropbox. All right, thanks, Mayor. I'm going to turn this over to Murnee so she can kind of walk us through the agenda for the City Hall and introduce the appropriate people.
Are we using this?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to know where to put my stuff.
All right, it's all yours.
Okay, I'm Murnee Dowd. I'm the Resources Director and the Acting Facilities Director, and with me is Mike Penwell, our Design and Construction Manager, who I think you all know, Otto Patichia and John Raul. And we are going to bring you up to date on where we are with the City Hall planning process, and I thought that first I would give you a little bit of the nuts and bolts of what we're doing with mothballing, moving people out and mothballing, and then Mike will take it over and talk to you about our exploration of options for a new or renovated City Hall. So I think you know that Human Resources went to the Woolworth Building in April. We have Muni Court now in the Roberts Building. Police Department is moving to 300 Country Club Road at the end of July, last week in July, and that move will take several weeks to accomplish. And then, last but not least, is the Council and the City Managers Office, City Attorney, and City Prosecutor all co-locating in the Lane County Public Service Building. So we hope to have you all moved in August while you're on break. So the renovations over there are pretty well completed, and there will be a few renovations to Harris Hall as well. So that's the move process. We're doing pretty well with getting everyone out of City Hall. So then, we have a whole sort of series of plans for mothballing. City Hall Facilities has worked with the Police Department, Parks and Open Space, Cultural Services, and PDD in the parking program to come up with a comprehensive plan for this building once it's vacated. Our plan is to continue to use the lower level for parking. We're going to have more security and have completely fenced-in parking area down below, but you all will be able to continue to park under City Hall, and then PDD will continue to sell spaces down there for monthly parking and hopefully be able to make some revenue as we have more development downtown. We have a fencing plan, a security plan is two-pronged. We will have fencing all around this facility at the street level, but also at, you can imagine, the fencing plan is a little complex given the multi-levels of this building. So the upper level will be fenced as well as the lower level, but we will maintain the street-level landscaping so it will look as nice as possible. And it will be chain-link fence for security purposes so people, the police and others, can see into the facility, and that'll help enhance security. We will be having DePaul Security, which provides the security for the parking garages, provide security for this facility as well, including walking through on a regular schedule every night. And then, Facility Staff will be in here weekly to just observe the facility and make sure that it's secure. We, Facilities, will also be maintaining major systems, like the elevator, we will maintain, even though we don't plan to use it. Fire and security systems will be maintained as well as the emergency generator, but otherwise, the facility will be closed totally once you all move out. We do have, we did have, our partnering with Parks and Open Space was an inventory of all the plants up here at the plaza level, and they, none of them are rare species, even though some of them have significance to one of our sister cities. We checked with the sister city organizations, but we have a, the plan for the landscaping is basically to shelter in place until we know for sure what we're doing. We're not going to start digging up plants and moving them at this point. So I think that is the, that in a nutshell on our plans for mothballing City Hall.
So just my comment about that is, and I guess I'll be just a endless repeat of this, is that I actually hate the word mothballing because it actually gives the message of putting it away. I prefer being, you know, we're out temporarily while we're doing something new. I don't know how you nuance that, but I think it's, I just can't say enough how important I think it is how we talk about this and the language that we use to give people a sense of, yes, we're going to take care of what we have, and we're going to be out of here and make changes and get back into a new City Hall as soon as possible. So how we talk about this from now forward, and I've had several conversations this afternoon about that, too, that my feeling, of course, is that I think as soon as humanly possible, Council needs to figure out the direction they want to go, and then we need to get it on a timeline and let people know what to anticipate so people don't have a worry or a concern that we're going to walk away and leave this facility in a state of mothbollage.
In the back of the closet?
Yeah, that's right. Wanted to-
It smells like mothballs.
Yeah, right. And the other thing I wanted to know, I know you're doing all of this, but just wanted to make sure that we're really taking any precaution for any pieces of public art or anything like that that's on site, that we're, whatever we need to do to protect it because we're not here all the time, that we do that so that we don't see any deterioration of anything or anything having an opportunity to be destroyed, and in the meantime, that will be, will probably be important to us in the future.
We have partnered with Cultural Services and have had a conservatory look at the mural in the Council Chamber, which is one of our biggest concerns, and have recommendations on that, so we are thinking about public art as well.
I would just point out, when you go to our city website and talk about our public art, many of the pieces we talk about on that website are pieces that are on our walls or around this building, so it's going to be really important for us to have a, I'm sure you've done that, but I just wanted to, it's just be important that we have a full information about what we need to protect and think of as art pieces as opposed to just a piece of a building if you don't. Anybody else have any? Right. Mike?
Okay, I'll take it away. Hi, nice to see you all again. Just wanted to give a quick overview of what we're going to do from this point forward and for the meeting tonight. Murnee's already covered the update on moving out of City Hall and preserving the City Hall in a museum-like display for the community to walk by on a daily basis, practicing.
Done now, Mike.
I'll give a little intro just on the overview of the different options and strategies that we've looked at here. We'll have John Raul talk about the urban context of City Hall. Otto Patichia will do an update on the major renovation or rebuild option, and John, then we'll come back and complete the presentation with the new building option. If you can remember back to just about a year ago and when we came and talked to you about the process for how we were going to investigate these two different options, the first thing was to get the Southwest Oregon Chapter of the American Institute of Architects involved, and they reviewed all the previous studies and did some urban analysis on the context, and that report is available online, and there's a link to it in today's Agenda Item Summary. They did a nice job, found a lot of commonalities. We didn't want to disregard the past, but we wanted to capture what we've done in the past, even as we move forward, so that we, you know, take into account all the good work that's been done in the past. We kind of came to talk about these as strategies rather than options because one thing this isn't, wasn't meant to be, is a beauty contest, that here's a finished design for a new building and here's a finished design for a renovate building. This was more exploring two different strategies, and if you think of sort of two ends of a bookcase, one end might be just try to renovate it as-is, and the other end just tear down and build new. We moved the renovate bookend about halfway over, knowing that because of codes and the structural work that needed to be done and energy efficiency and so on, that some amount of demolition was inevitable in this building even with a renovate option, and so that's why Otto came to call that the rebuild option rather than the renovate option, because we're really sort of tearing back down to the bones and even selectively demolishing a portion of the plaza here in order to make better connection to the street and better connection up to the plaza that we have already. And then, of course, the other end of the spectrum is the new building option. So the other difficulty was trying to make sort of an apples-to-apples comparison on things that aren't really apples-to-apples, it's more of an apples-to-peaches or grapefruits or something, but we did have some commonalities. We sort of arbitrarily selected $15 million as a working budget for both. We have about half that funding available through the facility reserve, but then the other half is, you know, yet to be determined. You've seen some potential sources for some of that money, but in conjunction with the consultants involved, we felt that was a good amount of money to accomplish kind of a minimum first phase of City Hall with both of the strategies. Both strategies end up with approximately 25,000 square feet of finished space, and so that is programmatically enough to take care of Mayor, Council, City Managers Office, including the public meeting spaces, adjunct support spaces, and that sort of thing. So that's kind of what we established as a minimum Phase One, really looking at this initially, at least, as sort of the ceremonial City Hall where the business of the Mayor, Council, and City Manager takes place. So in that respect, we tried to make equal the cost and the square footage. So from there, it kind of diverged because with the renovate, you end up with some shelled space that can be finished later with the new, you end up with a lot of developable property left over, so it diverged quite a bit. The renovate option also has parking that's included because we keep much of the lower level of City Hall, whereas the new building doesn't. We assume that parking would be addressed as, parking for this end of downtown would be addressed collectively rather than as part of the project itself. Then, we also had the City Hall Advisory Committee involved so that as the consultants got their work to a certain point, then we would bring it to the City Hall Advisory Committee to review, and in your Agenda Item Summary is a list of the participants. And we took the advice to look for people that were creative, thoughtful, and open-minded rather than people that had already made up their mind, and as a result, we didn't have any great battles and people yelling at each other across the table, but we did have a lot of really good discussion and discourse and some good thoughtful work, which, you know, is different, but it worked and we enjoyed it. In general, I would say that there was pretty widespread support for both options, even though there are very different risks and rewards for the two options. The majority of the committee, even though they might lean one way or the other, seemed to feel that we could be successful with either one, it just depends on what we wanted to accomplish through this process. And I'll let the consultants share a little bit more on that. And in the end, we realized, and the committee urged us to do, that we needed to do a lot more staff work, which is one of the reasons it's taken a while to get here and get back to the table with you, and so this seems like a good time to do the update. And so, I think with that, I'll turn it over to John Raul to- And so I think with that, I'll turn it over to John Raul to talk a few minutes about the, the urban context.
I think you have a copy of the reports that we produce which have diagrams about the urban context. So I'm just going to wave my hand in place of diagrams over top of an air photo. Thanks, Mike. So this is an air photo of downtown. The yellow square is the City Hall block. We've got the streets labeled here. What we did is we took the AIA report about the urban context and looked at the city plan, the downtown plan, and applied good urban design principles and on-the-ground observation, walking around, looking at the site and the surroundings to try to understand, how do you think about not just City Hall, but how it, how it works in the city and what's going on in the city? So one of the things, look at the plan, city, downtown plan talks about great streets and we're on one right here. Eighth Avenue is a great street which someday might connect us to the river. And so we need to think about, what does it mean to be on a, a great street? City plan, or downtown plan talks about placemaking and places that people want to be. So we look around downtown where people tend to gather or tend to go, Fifth Street Market, maybe the Holt Center, the park blocks right here with Saturday Market or the Farmers Market. You think about City Hall, is it a, have we made a place here? Well, we've got some work to do. It's not necessarily a place that people go to hang out. So let's think about placemaking and how City Hall can contribute to that. Think about city halls that are in great cities or smaller cities or towns and they often have a public space associated with them. So we need to think about public open space, outdoor space. Is that a, a square? Is it a park? We have some parks downtown. Honestly, when we, we analyze some comparable cities, you look at say the Pearl District where there's lots of dense housing and what's the future of, of this city? Would it include more density? Well, there might need to be some more open space. So you think about the meaning of City Hall, but also what it contributes to a sustainable future and a 50-year vision, which this might want to be, and open space might need to be part of that on the block. Also looking at the street structure, we've got Seventh and Eighth running east-west. Of course Sixth and Seventh are our one-way couplets and very, very busy streets. We've got Pearl running one-way south, High running one-way north, Eighth running one-way west. And honestly, west, one-way streets are not that great for pedestrian life. So for example, when you stand at this corner of Eighth and Pearl, cars are kind of surprised when you try to cross the street. So we might want to think about, well, what is, what does the street do in, in conjunction with the City Hall to make a place that pedestrians, bicycles, everyone can feel like they belong? The way that you see City Hall, how do we, how do we see it? What are the views toward it? Seventh, if you think about coming in to town or you're driving one-way east on Seventh, that's actually a very prominent corner, Seventh and, and Pearl. But we don't think of that as a signature view of the City Hall necessarily. This is, the corner of Pearl and Eighth is, from a pedestrian point of view, is, is an obvious place to see the City Hall, but it's actually opposite the flow of the, the streets. You think about, well, how do you, how do you, how do you know where the front door is? And that's, that's one of the questions. What's the front of the City Hall? What should it be? And if you look at the concept of the building, the layout of it, it's kind of omnidirectional, like there's no preference where we are in Eugene. Maybe that's a good thing. There's also, there's also, it is, it is a good thing, but there is maybe a confusion about, well, where's the, what's the orientation of the block? What's, what's the front? There, it does seem to be a pull toward the center of downtown and we might need to think about those two things. It's serving all of Eugene, but it's also looking toward the center of the city. A couple of other, other things to think about, we talk about livability of the city and places where people go and active, street-level places. Again, there's kind of an activity at street level around Fifth, Fifth Avenue, Fifth Street Market and Broadway, Pearl. And then when we get in here, it's, it's not so active on the street. You can even associate the districts, you know, active uses tend to cluster and you see that here, you see that there. You don't see it here. And in our diagrams, we put the, the government uses, we map those as blue and the active uses, not that government isn't active, but the active street level being red and you could really see that there's kind of a divide in the city. And that may not be very healthy for the future urban structure. So how can the City Hall and this block contribute to knitting this back together? And when we think about the great street, it's, it seems like a nice idea to focus energy in the city plan, but you think about Pearl and High maybe as being equally as important in the structure of the city. So it may not just be Eighth, that actually we were just walking along the west side of the building tonight. There are no street trees. It doesn't feel like all that pleasant a place to be. So Pearl, High is a little more pleasant, but those, those play a role. Finally, the, the block itself, zooming in more at the building scale, it is a whole city block. Eugene's city blocks were historically platted as four equal squares with alleys running across. And when you look at the, say the new build options, you want to think about not just the whole block, but what's the parcel structure? And that's the historic structure. You can see elements of that in neighboring blocks. And just from a, a natural connection to where we are geographically and where the sun is and where the wind is, of course, this is south. If you orient a building in our climate, you want to run it east-west for good daylighting and make it skinny. So we have kind of a square block. What do we do with that? You see in, in this, in the existing building, there are, it, it kind of treats the four sides equally and we could think about that differently. And finally, the wind in our, our area consistently comes from the north in the summer and from the south in the winter and that might affect where outdoor space is located. Okay. Otto?
One thing while Otto's coming up, I wanted to remind you it was in the AIS, but Turner Construction helped us, helped us with the costing on both so that we had really good numbers from a reputable contractor and not just the architects guessing. Sorry, Otto.
That's quite all right. I'm here. I'm assuming since we only have 10 minutes each that everybody has read the report somehow. And that my hope is, is that we sort of, this is just the introduction and the rest of the time is answering questions because it's a little bit involved. As, as Mike said, we started talking about this early as a remodeling. We gave up on it being a remodeling. We've called it a rebuild. That's very different. It's not necessarily meant to be a historic restoration. It's meant to actually take what's here that works and throw away everything that doesn't work. So the rebuild is a better term than renovate. We don't, we haven't dealt with renovation at all. What we did do is, and, and what I have in my hand is what's in the report, which is the summary. We've learned from the past years, we can make thicker reports, but nobody reads them, so, so we just make the summary. So I'm going to try to save time and just literally go through the highlights of the summary. We've actually called this a hybrid since it's not remodeling. It's rebuilding, so it's somewhere between a new building and renovation. Now we actually are going to tear parts of this building down at least. That's what our thought was in the study. We did enough engineering to find out all about the stuff you know about, the seismic problems. The biggest problem architecturally, and it was pointed out in the AIA study, is that the building does not connect to the street well. Its entrance is on the wrong, in the wrong place. It's always been in the wrong place. When I did the, the public services building, we built the bridge so we could try to reach out and make this building connect to the park box. It's harder now with more security in public buildings, but by and large, that was the idea. We discovered that the seismic retrofit is not terribly complicated. We had engineers involved in our study. It's not complicated. We also were told that one couldn't tear parts of the building down since it's a post-tensioned building and we discovered that there were poor joints within the post-tensioning. We went back through the original drawings and we can actually tear parts of the building down. So by and large, the building, from our standpoint, it's a frame. The sense is, is to take everything off this building except the frame. The frame is a reinforced concrete frame. It'll last certainly more than 50 years. It certainly can be reinforced. It tends to need some sheer walls down in the lower level. It's like a table on legs. You got to make the legs stiff in order for the table to be stiff. So there's not much down below except posts. It's actually an ugly building in some ways. The ugliest part about how, is how it presents itself to the street, forgetting the vertical wood things. It's, it's the parking is what is the strongest part of the vision and parking is not very pleasant. It's not lit well, it's not comfortable, and it actually isolates the building from the street. So what we started out with was we need to do seismic upgrades, energy retrofit, new building systems, increase accessibility, improve wayfinding, enhance connection to the street, make a symbolic presence, inspire civic pride. And somehow within all of those, that recipe is to have a retention and development of the original design concept. It's a very unique design concept. I won't go through the history, but it's one of the very few buildings in Eugene that has a pedigree. You might call it public art. Architecture sometimes could be called public art. So by and large, I won't go through the history of the existing building, we've already done that many times. The original design concept is interesting. There is not another City Hall in the world that is like this, where you could actually, when it was a small town, come onto the upper level and walk to the manager's office, walk to the mayor's office, walk to public works. It just didn't have a pot-bellied stove. It had everything as informal, but not a pot-bellied stove. I'd like to call it a democratic system, where you don't come in a building to a lobby and you're given the clue at the lobby what floor to go to and you count the door numbers until you find the department. You could actually come, the lobby is this plaza. So the condition of the building is not good. I happen, the question that keeps coming up is what about the aesthetics of the building? No one seems to like this language of the 60s anymore. If it was a ugly 1890s building, you would probably wrap yourself around it, but the buildings of this era don't seem to have that same kind of care and affection. But it has a history. As a matter of fact, you need to do something about it soon before it gets put on the National Historic Registry. I think the aesthetics of this building are the concept. Concepts are design things. I'd like to believe that you don't just put makeup on a building. You actually have a concept, an idea. Buildings need to start with an idea. This building has an idea. So let me talk just a little bit about this part and this part. When John did the urban stuff, we sort of walked that together. What we've talked about is actually taking off this end of the whole building. The end from where the entrance is now to the street. Take it down. Build a park or terrace at the street level or use that as the terrace to get to the lower level. This is the council chamber. It shows up again here, but this is the council chamber. We would expand the council chamber in this direction. So this is all new. And what that would be is finally an entrance to the council chamber that's not outside. It would actually have restrooms that you don't have to walk across the place to get to. It actually has a museum in it so that you can take all the trophies and all the artifacts that you've collected and have a place to it. And in, at least in our little study, we have three McNutt rooms in this space. And this all faces to the south and out to the terrace, out to the park, the terrace on the ground floor. It's just an idea. It's not designed. This then would be the manager's office and the, and the council's offices. The little square things you see here, there, we've got actually three ideas here. And again, it's only a strategy. The three ideas are simply, we could use, leave all the parking down below, just cut this part off. This is the part that the parking vision is more screwed up and ugly than anyplace else. We've taken, we've made the entrance here. We've got enough space now to make very gentle ramps to get up to this space. We also have an idea about going down if we wanted to use more of the building. The building frame is 200,000 square feet. To throw away 200,000 square feet is a big trash. What we did when we did, when we did the study with Turner and he did some studies for us in terms of cost, we discovered that we could reinforce the building and do the selective demo, take the screen off, tear the end of the building down for the same price as tearing the whole building down and recycling the concrete and filling it back up with gravel. So after you spend a million dollars, you could do the selective demo, you could repair the structure of this building and have 200,000 square feet of frame with 100 cars, which are worth to replace between, right around three, $3 million. Or you can tear it down, fill it with gravel, put a new building on it, a building that's about 20,000 square feet and a whole bunch of extra land that you'd need to develop or use in, in time. Our scheme sort of thinks about then taking just this part, repairing the plaza. The squares that you see here would be if we use the lower floor, we'd start poking through the two-way slabs as you can see outside here so we can skylight to the lower floor. We would take this gray area and we'd shell it. Shelling it means that we would put a new facade on the whole building. It isn't plywood. We'd put a facade on the whole building. We'd put glass to all the spaces and in time, you could incrementally move either agencies back in or you could lease it. But it would be about, as, as was said, about 25,000 square feet of usable space. We'd be captured the 16,000 square feet of basement for mechanical and storage. We'd have 100 cars parked in a structure and we'd have about 35,000 or 40,000 square feet of rentable space. We went through one more time and did a maximum scheme, which is actually, this end of the building is framed for more, is structured for more building, three more floors. So we were saying if you wanted to go farther and put the entire capacity of the program on this site, we could build another floor right here on top of this part. We're going to put new elevators in and everything else in. Everything goes. Mechanical system goes, roof goes, electrical goes, everything is back to the frame. And it seemed that, that, as I said, there's two schemes. One's called the min scheme, the max scheme. The min has two parts. Min is only using the terrace at the ground floor level. The next scheme beyond that, the two-level scheme, is actually underneath this part, bringing the terrace down to the lower level so that there could be something happening at the lower level that can move out into the, into the terrace. The building, the other, the part, the other aesthetic part that I skipped over is simply, there will never be another building like this ever built in the downtown of any city. I love the extravagance of this building. It's, yeah, it's built out of concrete block and so on, but the extravagance is that no one, no developer would ever build a one-story building and, and over a full square block in a downtown. I think that's a special kind of aesthetic. Can't ever be replaced, can't ever be done anyplace else. And it's kind of an extravagant statement that I believe cities should be extravagant.
Do you want to take questions on his particular one or do you want to do the whole presentation first and then come back?
It's okay. We'd like to just keep going right on through.
Can everyone see, see these boards? I'm going to flip this around. It has, I apologize, there are lots of little diagrams here. This, this one just has the upper floors of, of the ground floor plans that are shown on these three. So, so these simply look at, because we have a fair bit of freedom with a small building on a big site, there's not just one answer. We started with five and we got down to three with the help of the, the committee. All of these kind of take a, a view that, say, I don't know if you've been to the Seattle City Hall, the new, newish City Hall they built. Very, very big city. It's kind of a small ceremonial City Hall, I guess is what you could call it. Houses all of our program if we were there. But the idea is that it has a kind of intensity that's very public. There's public space, there's a smaller building and that kind of jewel-like quality of it can be an asset. So one of the opportunities of doing a building that's 25,000 square feet that's civic is that you can make it, have a strong identity. It's small and that's one of the challenges. It's not very tall, doesn't have a lot of mass if this is the square footage we're talking about. So that's one of the challenges we faced was what do we do with this tiny little program and make it work? Well, all of the schemes try to take the council chambers and the public entrance and really say, if you're going to do a new building, get it at-grade so it's absolutely accessible, it's easy to find the entrance, you're not going to get lost at night here. You can get to the council chambers and there's- you can get to the council chambers, and there's a strong relationship between the council, the political center of city government, and a connection to some kind of public open space. In this, first, we called it an option here, it's sort of a baseline, because we think of it as the obvious thing to do, is if you follow the context analysis, build the building on the great street, build it on 8th Avenue, but don't spend a lot of extra money on open space. There's a plaza on the southwest corner connecting to the kind of center of the city, and then you end up with extra land, and that's the opportunity. It also could be seen as a downside, well, it's empty, and don't we have empty spaces elsewhere in the city? What are we going to do with that? It could be future city hall expansion. It could be sold, could be developed in partnership opportunities, all sorts of opportunities there. But it's really focusing in east-west, you know, that's good for daylighting, good for energy use, good for reinforcing the street, fairly modest building. In this case, we have a little box over here that if you didn't have an arbitrary limit on the square footage or the budget, maybe you'd build the building so it fills the whole edge of the block. This second scheme takes the small city hall idea and stacks it up. Maybe two stories is just too short, let's make it three stories, and you can see in that diagram right there how you'd stack up city manager on the ground floor, mayor and council, and put the council chambers one level up with really good access through a lobby that could be an exhibit and so on. So making a city hall that fronts on to a park, what do we do with this extra space? In 50 years, will you appreciate a park, one more park downtown? Well, we don't have a lot of park space if you really analyze it compared to other cities in our downtown. So we want people to live here. That might be an option to think about. This gives you some room to expand. All of these schemes account for 30 parking spaces on the site, and in this case, you get a parcel that's along High Street that could be another civic use, it could be a museum, it could be housing. There are opportunities. I mean, this is in the middle of the city, it's quite valuable land. This third version takes, really is sort of inspired by the Seattle City Hall, where you take, and there are other cities that have done this, where you take city hall and you really go for it, you make a public space that is a park space. And you might say, oh, the park blocks are our jewel. There are a lot of hardscape. We don't have really a soft park downtowns. If you want to live downtown, there's, we only have one kind of open space. I know, you know, challenges come with public open space, but what if you did that right here? And there's a little 3D diagram of it. And then build a east-west building, kind of similar to the first scheme, only setting it back. There's less leftover property on the north side that might be a city hall future expansion, more in scale with what you need, and really makes a commitment to some kind of public space. All of these schemes, you know, they're not one-story buildings. On the other hand, they're not tall buildings. So when Otto says it's extravagant to have a one-story building, it's really in the long run, it's kind of extravagant to only have a two-story building. Maybe it should be taller, but this was the program, and so it made sense, it fit in a simple, all of these try to be simple rectangles, but put the public elements in the right place and make really strong, clear entry orientation and easy circulation, easy to find your way around the building. So you might, from the back, you might have a hard time reading the difference between the yellow and the green. That is circulation space. So it's condensed, but it's big enough to be public and be a good place, say, in a winter evening outside a work session or a council meeting.
Can you read the colors?
Council chambers, red. In this, where we are right now, a McNutt room, that would be, that's this room right here. In this case, it's, the workroom is on the ground level, so it could be a community meeting room when you're not using it for this kind of activity. In this case, the council chambers and the meeting room. There's circulation that is dark purple. The city council and mayor's offices, I think it's about 5,000, 6,000 square feet in the program, are blue, and then the city manager in all of these schemes is orange. So, sorry, I'm bouncing around here. You can see in this east-west scheme, the city manager would be on the second floor. In this scheme, city manager's on the ground floor, councillor, we thought that the council should be close to where the council room is.
All right. Go ahead and turn it over to questions, comments, whatever.
I just want to say, I appreciate both the context and both presentations, and things that came to my mind, I can see things in all of them that I liked, the relationship stuff to the downtown seemed really important to me. I don't know whether you had a discussion about incorporating a farmer's market or some larger community space or not with a city hall, but my, as I looked at that, because I've thought about that for a long time, that community often looks at city halls as a place where bureaucrats are housed, as opposed to something that really belongs to them. And so it seems to me important that when we have a city hall, that we have something that the public obviously can see has something really in it for them. And if we listen to people, I think all of us around this table would think that a farmer's market is something people talk about a lot. So, and community space. And as I thought about that, I thought, well, if there's any part of this that you might put together that the public might be willing to invest in, it would be those public parts of it. I think they would look to us to find our own way to finance the office part, but they might, a park addition, open space addition, or farmer's market addition, or community space addition might be something that the public would be willing to invest in as part of this too. So just something to think about. Betty?
Thank you. For both of them, I'd like, you say the cost is comparable to the two. How about the time that it would take to do it?
I would say they're pretty comparable as well. Would you guys agree with that?
Is it still going to be, as John says, two-yearish?
Two to three.
Two to three.
Oh, gosh, come on.
I mean, realistically, and they can, maybe.
I'll have to run for a seventh term if I can keep this up. I think when you talk about belonging to the people, I think our current council chamber really is welcoming, and it has, the way you can look in and look out, it's connected to the outside, and it's connected to the people that are outside. It's easy to get into once you get up the steps. So Otto, I have a question. Are we asking questions of these people, I assume?
Yeah, sit at the table.
Can I get to sit next to you?
Please do. Please do. You never know what's going to happen, brother.
It could be luck, you're in supply. So Otto, you said expand the council chamber. Would you save the part that's there down?
Oh, no. The chamber would stay there. It would be that we would expand then to the west. We'd actually build a new piece of building. We'd link where the doors are now, the doors to the west. We'd link there, and then we would have a lobby, a place people could come out of the weather before they went in. There would be an exhibit space, and there would be some meeting rooms.
Got it. And the sun could still, sunset could still be seen from in there. How about the water feature? Are you thinking of repairing the water, the place where there used to be water?
Oh, the moat?
The moat.
No, what we would do with the moat is probably use that as a way to connect both floors. We would actually probably let that be a light source to the lower floor. Being in the parking level is not pleasant, whether it's parking or building. It needs to be activated. You enter it on grade at the north side. You walk right in at the level of the street, the site slopes. And so, you can ride a level. It's nice to come into the lower level if it's lit, if it's not inhibited. We had actually played with, again, these are just strategies. We also played with taking the firehouse and turning that into the courts, because it's the only part of the building that's got tall ceilings. And it's on the corner. And would allow the public to come into the building and get into that part without coming up to the upper level. In terms of the park itself, the idea would be if 8th Avenue is going to be the main course to the river, it'd be nice to have a series of parks. Maybe the public market is the whole length of 8th Avenue in some way, that is used for those times and not for other times. But a series of parks that get you to the river instead of one big park seems to me to be, big park is a destination in some ways.
So with your scheme still, Otto, where would there be, are you thinking of some park space?
The park space would be, would be the part that we tore off the building, the whole south wing.
Okay, got it.
It's right here. It also opens it to the council chambers, so you can see it from the street. It opens it, connects the plaza to the street. So there's a lower park and an upper park.
Okay. And is, and either one of you, are you thinking of any water feature there?
You know, that would come in a design phase. You know, this is not a design phase. This is simply a strategy, time, and testing.
Right. But you've taken away, the part, with your scheme, you've taken away the place where there used to be water before it started leaking.
We might actually put it at the lowest level.
It's a water feature to the east.
So that it's within the parking area and the connection to the lower, to both floors. It wouldn't leak that way either.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
I've got George Brown and then Andrea.
There's a water feature to the east.
Thanks, Mayor. I think the first thing, I mean, the most fundamental thing that council and staff and everybody needs to think about is, what's the ultimate strategy? I mean, these, all these are very interesting plans, but is the, and do we want, I feel that we should do this. I don't know how everyone else feels, but it's something I think we need to talk about no matter which, what we decide to do, is, is the ultimate strategy to move all of the city functions back into this location, except of course for the police department. They're gone. As maybe the leases expire, the buildings we're releasing, of course, we own a couple of the sites. We own the library, central services, and we own the atrium, planning and development, but we're leasing, you know, public works and some other things.
HR.
And so, that's the first thing I think we need. Do we want to do that, or do we want to leave things spread out and continue to pay rent? Would we keep money? Naturally, if we weren't renting, we'd be saving that, and so savings could go towards building costs. So that's, I think that's the fundamental thing we all need to decide what we want to do about that. Obviously not right now, a second, but we need to be thinking, and I feel that we should move everything back to one location. I do have a couple of questions. I just, I didn't have time to go over all this in the detail that I normally like to do, but I saw some interesting things. And I, the Royal Brokop scheme is, they both cost about the same, there's a little price difference, that the square footage would be 24,500.
That's about, roughly. Yes.
And Otto, I wasn't, I looked at yours, at the last page, on page 39, and I see total gross building area, 162,000.
That's the footprint of the frame.
That's for the toll, if you were going to do the, that's the frame.
That's the frame minus the part we took off.
And is your square footage roughly, for the first stage, roughly equal to the Royal?
It's roughly about 35,000 plus the 16,000 square foot basement and 100 or 125 cars.
I see. Okay, that was another question. Yeah, I wanted to know about the parking, because we're still going to need parking. I don't know, I kind of like the idea of a, maybe a little museum or something here, but I don't know that we'd need to think about, city hall is a big attraction for people. It's like, I just don't think people hardly anywhere go, hey honey, let's go down to the city hall and have some fun. You know? I mean, people come here for specific, for specific functions. No, they come to testify at a public hearing, or they come to get information, or they come to, you know, pay a parking ticket. It's like, it's a business-like atmosphere, not commercial, but it's city business, and I just don't know that we need to make it like a theme park or anything like that. I think it should still stay pretty functional. Yes, it would.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So George, Council Brown spoke pretty much my question, you know, thinking about, what are we talking about, you know, just us or all the other ancillary services? But the one thing I want to, for the viewers at home, I want to make sure that they understand, this is just the beginning of a long conversation, because we really haven't given staff direction as to whether we're going to stay here, rebuild, move, or what we're going to do with the property. So this is the first of a long conversation that we're going to be having and a direction that we're going to be going. Is that correct, city manager?
Yeah, what we are hoping is, I would echo the mayor in the sense that the sooner we get the direction, it will be helpful. But yes, this is, there's more conversation still to be had about all of this. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alan?
So, it's interesting to me that there's no remodel of this building. That's off the table, and I think that's probably a good thing. One thing I'm struck by is how similar both these are. They both have very, very, very similar visions about how the spaces could be used in the layer, having a front 8th, having a layer be open space park, whatever have you, and then the city government on top of that. So I think they're really just kind of different variations on the theme, whether, and I suspect that remodeling the gray area back there, Otto, isn't that much different than John's rebuilding, rebuilding in terms of cost?
No, the answer is.
Because you just, you'd gut this and just have it as a shell, right?
It would be a shell, but you'd have, the estimates show that the frame is worth somewhere between $75 and $100 a square foot. New buildings are still going to have a frame.
Yeah.
So the point is, is that it would be somewhat less. The part that gets back to Brown's comment though, is that if you shell out a whole bunch of space, and you begin to want to either move staff back in, in increments, you can do it in little 5,000, 3,000, 10,000, 20,000 square foot increments. You would never build an addition to a new building unless, less than, at least 10,000 square feet, or perhaps 20,000 square feet. So incrementally, the city could grow, new departments could emerge, other things could happen because you have the flexibility of the shell.
And the structure, sound?
The structure would be sound.
With the seismic upgrades?
Yeah.
So talk about that, and what happens to the basement, and talked a bunch about sheer walls and more pillars, and how does that work with parking and?
What we did was looked at two different schemes. We called one is, both of them are the minimum. One is the one-level, the plaza-level scheme, which means that the lower level stays pretty much as parking, except for the west side. The west side, we would actually build more sheer walls and probably eliminate some of the parking. We'd leave the firehouse, because I think you can use that space, and we're tearing off the south end. So we begin to do, we've got a drawing that we've made with the engineers that keep parking and do the seismic, you have to use walls instead of just trying to glue columns together. We did see that there's one option, it's called a max scheme, which takes us up to 15 million of direct construction. 11 million is what we assumed was the budget. You would find 15 million, there's a whole bunch of soft costs and other stuff that you've got to keep. 11 million was sticks and stones. And 15 million sticks and stones, we would actually use the third floor if we built it on the north end to reinforce the building as well. We would actually bring legs down among that and actually glue this building to that. That's a different strategy. But either one of them came out seismically to reinforce, from both engineers and estimating, to be around a million bucks.
And so it'd be pillars, but you still could get parking in there.
Oh, yeah. You'd have to do that.
And John, the southern is to have it become grade, at grade.
Yeah, I mean, when you're looking at the plans, they look the same. But remember, if you were to start over with our values about the relationship of cars and people, you probably wouldn't make the cars the prominent thing and elevate, you know, hover above a parking lot. So what this, what that, what a new build allows you to do is set the building at grade, and put the entrance at grade, and make it universally accessible, and that's, seems non-trivial in a city hall. As far as structure goes, when you build new, you can lay out the grid for office standards that I think you find in this building, that there's some limitations in the flexibility over time. So that is, there is, there's a value to reusing, but you usually pay for it in some way in the space utilization of the building. Another thing to consider in the new build, and we got some comments with our advisory committee about being concerned about uncertainty in the empty, what do we do with this empty land downtown? We've got too much. Well, that can be a downside, it can be an upside if it's a valuable piece of property. And we did get some input that this is a very valuable piece of property. So is there a higher and better use? Can we use it more intensely?
Right. And not just for government, it could be sort of-
A mix.
Be mixed use, or, or housing, or some, anything like that, yeah. So the other thing is that neither of you really addressed how this, how this interacts with the lot across the street to the south, which is the parking lot which we own, and I'm wondering if you put any thought into that. I mean, we own that entire half-block. I mean, the shed wants to move back and put a, more classrooms and new concert space there, but how might, both your concepts have the, the plaza in the front part, and so how does that relate to the parking lot? What would potential for that be?
What, what we did, we didn't get into it very, very thoroughly, but what we did say is that if you ever built an office building on the south side, you could use the parking that you already owned in a structure and not have to jack that building up or sink that building down to put parking in, because the parking would be limited to public use only. So, so you actually could use the parking here to supplement the parking that you need from across the way. You own the parking. So that's as far as we went. We've done other sketches before we did the study, where we said, okay, build the ceremonial building here, build the office building across the street. We thought that with this flat building here, and everything around it fairly flat, and you control the property on the other side, we could actually always have solar access anytime we wanted. In this farm, we would have, at the upper level of this building, because there's nothing that's going to shade this building, uh, because you could limit the height of the building across the street. So that was some other place we put our thoughts about across the street.
And then, so this is kind of an artificial construct. They said twenty-five thousand square feet, fifteen million dollars. I mean, we still have, as Andrew said, we still have lots of conversation to be had about how would we finance something, how would we build it? Do we use a third party to build it and we, and we, uh, use their capital to create a city hall for us, and, or do we do a bond, or, and all these different kinds of things, and that also plays into how much money that we would have to play with this. I mean, the original concept, before I got on council, was this huge building, and it was a hundred and twenty million dollars, and that was never going to happen. And, and I guess the last question is, do we use anything from that process to get us to where we are right now? And what's the- Yes, absolutely. What's the takeaways that we?
There's a, there's quite a bit that we took away from that, actually, and, and one of them, one of the things that I think we took away is, is that having a fully consolidated city hall may not necessarily be a good thing. That some amount of, um, flexibility and, um, the ability to adapt to changing conditions is a, is a, is a positive. And I, I think the recent downturn in the economy has demonstrated that, and, and technology is changing the way we do business, too. And so a certain amount of flexibility, I think, is one of the biggest things that we took out of the city hall master planning process, and that it's actually good to move around a little bit. I mean, we don't want to disperse all over the, the place, but, um, there, there could be, it, it is about the vision. There could be some value in just a ceremonial city hall and then being adaptive with the other uses. There could be some value in, in more consolidation.
Yeah, I don't mind the concept of a ceremonial city hall with a dispersed, because I don't think we're going to get away from that, because you've got too much invested in all of that. The one, I mean, the atrium building has the potential to be brought over here, and that could be redeveloped in a different way. That has a lot of intrigue to me, but.
Want another round, Alan?
No, right now.
Chris?
Thank you. I appreciate Alan asking the question about the work that Whacker did, because I, I had the impression that there was a lot of foundational work that we could really draw from, and while they were not really talking about a city hall that was realistic in terms of being able to be done, I think some of the work around purpose and vision and strategic use was, was very valuable and, and hopefully important, the work that you did.
It was.
I'm pleased that, in, in my feeling, for the very first time, we're talking about an actual city hall that we could do. Um, and that's very exciting to me. And I have joked for a very long time that my best solution for this building will involve dynamite and wrecking balls, and I'm pleased to actually put the dynamite back in the box, at least for now, because of the work you've done. And I, and I appreciate acknowledging this building can't be remodeled. I never thought this building could be remodeled. And so I think you're being realistic in a way that I can relate to. Uh, you take it down to the frame and, and see what you can do with that. That provokes a lot of additional questions, and even when you tear it down to the frame level, is it the frame that we can work with? Is it the frame that we can get what we want from a vision standpoint? So then I go back to, we're not building a city hall for 2013 or 2014, we're building a city hall for 2050 and 2060. And will this building, even at the frame level, put back together again, be the city hall we want in 2050? I don't know if either design answers that question. I, I really don't. Obviously, we'll have to do it in phases and incrementally, and which bill, which structure will lend itself to that kind of longer-term vision. Um, so what's nice is to have two legitimate options to look at, which is nice. Neither one is what I'm going, you know, golly, I want a hundred and twenty million dollar building for fifteen million dollars, how come you can't give me that? So I have to be, I have to be very realistic about what you can have, but I find both designs very intriguing, and I recognize that whatever it is we do has to be functional, but I can't escape that symbolic element to it. It, what is your city hall, and what does it do? And I want for the folks in 2040 to be just as proud of their city hall and what function it serves as we will be tomorrow. And so I think either one of these is an effort to try to get there. And so from that, I want to follow on and, and explore both of these even more and see, because these are our best hope of actually getting a city hall. And so I think as a starting point for the conversation, I'm intrigued. I can see all sorts of additional tinkering and toying and adapting that would need to go on, but I like the thinking that's been going into this strategically, because I think it's trying to capture what we really want our city hall to be. Both designs are really trying to get to that and not turn it into a Quonset hut that we can afford for fifteen million dollars. None of us want that. So I, I appreciate the work that you're doing, I really do.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to both of you, and thanks to all for the level of work. These are great options, and they're, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness of this, to try and, as Chris said, give us some options that are doable, and that's, that's important. I also, to risk beating a dead horse, appreciate the, the manager and the staff are still looking at all options and not taking any off the table at this time. Um, I, I like both of these, these have some, some real benefits from my perspective for moving forward, but they, there, there are enough unanswered questions for me that it makes it difficult, and I, I relate to George Brown's point more than anything else, which is, I think the first parts of this need to be the thirty thousand foot, what are we trying to do? Are we going to bring city services all back in under one roof, or are we not? If so, do we still need the hundred thousand square feet, or do we don't? I mean, those sorts of policy-like questions about what the utility of the building and the, the long-term look and the vision for our downtown, I think are the, the part that we should play and that we should be talking about first. Um, I, for one, I don't have any problem, I've never made a secret of it, I still think E-Web, their admin building is our best option. I think that this building we're sitting in would make a fantastic, uh, park place, or, uh, Park Street type, you know, market, I'm not calling it the right thing, Pike-
Pike Place.
Pike, see, you guys are all having the same problem I am, too. Uh, you know what I mean, in regards to Seattle. I think that this building and a, in a partnership where we might get the money to have others participate in that and create that kind of reality in this space, gives us the money along with what we have to be able to do what we could at E-Web and save the taxpayers a lot of money. Um, I think for a bunch of reasons, it's a better option, but while we are discussing these and the majority want to go this way, I'll be happy to participate at that level, too. And I, I concur with Chris, but I would encourage us to, to step back a little bit and ask the questions, what, what are the larger visions that we're trying to accomplish? I, I think we could use with a central park through our downtown. I, I actually, Mark Gillen presented us with that option a number of years ago, and I, I for one have always appreciated it. I think it's a good idea. I think there are two buildings in the way of having a central park downtown, leading to the river, and I think it's a good idea. So that's my fifty-year vision for this part of town, but I don't know that the, a majority of my colleagues are there with me, so.
A couple of comments. One is that, um, we're going to have a future discussion, I guess, about the E-Web building possibility, I guess, if that's, if they want to do that.
Yeah, as, I think I mentioned, we mentioned the A I S, if it actually turns into a viable option, then we would want to come back to the council, have that conversation as possible.
So for my part, I'd be actually happy if E-Web stayed in that building, and my concern is that that building be at public purpose and have the public access, because I think the community values that very, very much. So I care about it from that perspective. If, in fact, they make the determination they're going to leave, that opens a whole bunch of new questions for us to, um, to consider. I also, um, have drawn to the discussion about the kind of period of architecture and art of this structure. I remind you guys that I showed you that the Oakland Art Museum, which has a very similar kind of architecture to this building, was, was renovated in a very, well, it probably had more good pieces than this, but nonetheless, it kept, it came in, it was, it's a pleasing, a pleasing building that maintains that period of, of architecture. And, um, I am going to suggest this, and we'll see if it has anybody, is it interesting? I kind of think that one of the things that might help this conversation move along is if there was a, a smaller group of council people who wanted to sort of, um, work through some of these initial questions and bring them back to council, so that we just kind of moved along at a, at a more iterative pace on this, to get through these initial questions that sort of lead us to the big decision-making point. So I just wanted to, to suggest that that might, and it would be probably helpful if that was composed of people with an assortment of views that can kind of work those together, right?
Do you have any, you know?
No, I don't.
Oh, I'd, I'd raise my hand, I thought you were going to answer.
Okay. So anyway, that's just my, my thinking about that. Go ahead, Tab.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I'd like to put myself in my design picture, but I don't think this is a good time or place for it. I, I have lots of thoughts about what this, uh, Farmer's Market's a great, Racquetball Court's a wonderful, it's a, you know, that's a different phase of the discussion. But, um, you know, Councilor Zelenka pointed something out that really is critical, and that is that both of the designs have, have very similar features, and very similar concepts that could either be designed separately or, or put together in some form. And, uh, really, it seems like a, a coalescence of, really, what the general picture is going to look like of this block that we're sitting in right now. And, uh, you know, like Council, Councilor Pryor, I think putting the dynamite back in the box is, is pleasing at this point in time, thinking that we could do something to restore or, or at least salvage some of the elements that we have in place here. I like the, the council chamber, for instance, I think the shape of it is very pleasing. But to me, the critical thing for this council is to, is to come up with a timeline, so that the public understands that we are doing something. You know, I talk out in the community right now, and very few people, precious few people know that anything is happening here. And when I do begin to talk about it, they say, oh, boy, we're going to have another hole. And I try to reinforce it, no, that's not going to happen again, but people simply don't believe that, because, um, you know, they've seen it happen a couple of times, and, and they don't really trust that we can make that not happen again. So I think being able to convince them and to articulate truthfully that that's not going to happen. In, in September, when we step across the, across the street, and the zoo chain-linked fences go up, and all of a sudden, it's beginning to look like another Dust Ball downtown, we need to be able to articulate that something is happening. What I would love to see is before this council is finished, and, you know, it's, six of us, six of the nine of us are on the ballot in November, so there's a good chance that some of us aren't going to be at this table, uh, come January. The, um, you know, that, we have, are able to at least get a timeline down, so that we're able to tell people that we do have something going. A backward-looking, present-looking, and a forward-looking timeline, that says, these are the checkpoints, basically a roadmap with intersections, saying, this is what we're expected to see. Now, don't, we're not going to be hard and fast about either design or even about specific times, but here is something that's going to happen, and you're not going to see anything languish downtown, the way you've witnessed in the past, and the way that you're seeing, you know, after, after all of this time, things are beginning to happen downtown. So I think, uh, once we get into November and December of this year, if we're able to be able to tell people that something is going on, yes, you see chain-linked fences now, but they're not going to be there very long, and if you look inside the chain-linked fences, boy, all the plans are still in place. You know, it's not, it's not a hole. It is something, there is a work in progress, and the council, the city manager, the staff, the mayor, has something going on that is going to be pleasant, going to be pleasing, and everybody's going to be satisfied in the end.
George Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I've got a couple of questions. I mean, just, just kind of following the thought of, if, if we all decide that all this, you know, ultimately, at some point in the future, all of the departments should move back to a central location, um, whether it's this spot or, or any other spot, I do look forward to listening to the, the, the new idea about E-Web, although I, I, at this moment, I figure, I favor this site, but that, that could change. Um, I, you know, it might be useful if we could know, let's just assume, say that the council might want to do that, have, have everybody move back together at some point in the, for our future. Uh, I'm just wondering, you know, ultimately, what's the, what would this total square footage needs be?
That without, that's without the police.
Without the police?
Right.
Yeah.
Or the fire headquarters, but anybody else-
No, no, it'd be impossible, and that's-
You kind of have a general ballpark, right?
Yeah, it's like a hundred thousand-ish. I mean, it depends on how much growth space and, you know, how far out you are, but, you know, eighty to a hundred thousand.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional.
Uh, that's total.
During that hundred, um-
That's total, and that, that would include the court and the, and the-
Uh, Mayor may not include court, but yeah, I mean, it's, there's, there's some pieces that are optional, but, um, and that's why I say a hundred thousand-ish.
Okay. In the hacker study, it was about two hundred thousand, which still includes the police. So there's about fifty thousand.
Well, there's fifty or sixty right there. You just saw the-
So, so what the hacker, we've been using the hacker program, if somebody asked, did we throw all that away? Of course not.
Million dollars.
And so it's, it, it came to a gross of about two hundred thousand, and that's with the police.
With the police, okay. It might, it might also be, be useful, and maybe it was in the, um, you know, the budget material that we were going over, but I wasn't focused in on that. I'm just curious how much rent that we're paying for Public Works and Muni and, and HR? If we could just, yeah, it's not, not even right now, but if-
We'll have that as-
That would be useful to know.
Particularly as you talk about, you end up forming a committee, that's the kind of stuff, for sure.
That would be a piece of info we could probably use. And, um, and you said, I believe, Otto, you said it was a million dollars for the seismic upgrade?
A million dollars for the seismic upgrade and selective demo. It's also a million dollars to tear the building down and turn it into gravel.
The whole building, okay. Well, now, the seismic upgrade, is that, is that to the life safety or essential standards?
No, that's, that's, that's still, that would be to not, it would not be to the standards of the firehouse or the police station. It would be to the standards of a public building, however, a city hall.
Life safety.
That would be life safety.
Correct.
Okay. Everyone would be able to get out.
Right.
Okay, well, that, I, I guess that would be, because you're going to, part of the building would be gone, and you wouldn't have to retrofit that, so that's considerably less than, I think it was five million, the estimate we had a few years, two and a half years ago. Okay. Okay, and then my final, I guess, question is, there's about eight million dollars in the facility reserve, is that roughly?
Seven and a half, seven and a half million, approximately.
All right. And so, so these plans are, are like, at least the way I write them, ten to twelve million, and then-
Well, fifteen million total project cost.
Fifteen total.
Right. It's eleven-ish for hard costs-
And then soft costs.
And then soft costs, right.
And what I should, what I should say is, what I asked Mike and the team and others is, um, to put a price tag on it that we think could be realistic to do, given our current financial situation, considering who may or may not be in the, that facility, where we could pay as you go, in essence, we wouldn't go, have to go out to the voters for a vote in order to bring more money into Phase One. So all of that, uh, the specifics of that is not tied down, but that's where we came not tied down, but that's where we came up with that 12 to $15 million figure.
Okay. Oh, and I'm assuming that we're going to be paying rent to the county.
We'll be paying some rent to the county.
Have that thrown in there, too.
And all of that would be.
Out of curiosity, I mean, I, because that would be money that we wouldn't, we wouldn't be paying out if we were all.
One of the things that was not part of the study, either study, was whether or not there are any grant potential, because to retrofit a building, to remodel a building, to make it energy better, to do many things, there may be grants available. That wasn't part of our study. It would seem to me that the city could certainly find out, to seismically upgrade, to, you know, do what you got to do. There's not very many grants for new buildings, by the way, but to retrofit, there could be.
Well, yeah, we got something from the federal government about, it was along the same timeline as the TARP funds, when those were available, that there are, there were then monies available for seismic, basically just making city facilities, public facilities safe in all ways. So I'll just finish by, so the quick comment, I kind of like the idea of saving. Oh, oops.
You want one more round?
Just one more quick one, I guess.
So one of the things that I would want to explore with a new city hall is, is having to be a zero-energy building. And is that possible with either of these, John?
I think it's possible with a new building.
Yeah, within the context of this, of this artificial construct.
That could one, could one of those be a net zero?
Yeah.
Yes.
Zero-energy building.
Yes.
I'm convinced that the remodeling of, the rebuilding of the city hall could also be net zero. We have a solar farm up there. We're going to make more than we're giving, than we're using.
So I would just, one of the things that, think about a new, you can build new buildings that are not energy efficient, but if you want to meet, you know, say, 2030 standards of doing, doing buildings that are really high performance, this was not built as a high-performance building. So for example, where the concrete frame goes from inside to outside, it's very difficult to insulate and so on. So if you want net zero, you first start by reducing the loss of, don't waste energy. So, you know, we weren't building buildings in 1960s that didn't waste energy. So if that's really a very high, you know, top priority, I would suggest that you're going to get there, and your budget is limited. I mean, you can, you can get there if you, if you want to keep spending money. But if your budget is limited, you know, a compact building that is very energy efficient, very, loses less energy, then you don't have to buy the expensive solar devices to generate.
Right, yeah. I agree with that. The other question I had was about, there's a lot of similarities. Eighth Street, facing Eighth Street, the plaza, and then the city hall kind of in the center, and then using the spaces, I don't like option two, but I like one and three, but, so using the spaces. So, John, can you talk about what the space would look like in interim? And then Otto, talk about what you would do to that, the two other buildings in the interim, what's included in doing that, and what that would look like?
So an option one, what would the two bars?
Or three, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in our budget, and we've tried to be quite, if you look in the report, be quite accurate about what's included, and it draws a box around the new building and the plaza space, and includes budget to bring, you know, put the gravel in and do modest improvements. It'd be some street trees and just, just making the site, except it's not improving it, yeah, grass, essentially. Yeah, you got it. It's not a parking lot. It's not, not improved beyond, just being grass.
What would the vacant buildings look like?
The vacant building, in the estimate, incidentally, if you have the chance to look through the estimate, which is a whole bunch of numbers, but Turner did an amazing job. I mean, he got down to doorknobs. I mean, it's, I was very impressed with what they did for us. We made sure that there was all new facades, that, that there was nothing really, other than the massing of the building, of this same building. There would not be unfinished, other than in the, in the, in the shell space, there would be no tenants, but there would be new facades both sides. There would be, there'd be no mechanical system within it. Electrical would be sized for it. The mechanical would be put in as the areas are fit, just like in any other shell building. But by and large, it would not look like a building boarded up. It wouldn't look like the shopping center with the boarded-up spaces waiting for a tenant.
But it would still be a vacant building.
It would be a vacant building.
And everybody knows what a vacant, when a building's vacant, everybody knows it's vacant.
Unless you build it. But at least it's a building. It's not just a piece of dirt with a sign on it saying, build a suit.
True. Right. I actually like both of these, and I guess we'd put some of the dynamite away, because you still need to blow apart it.
We need to blow apart it.
I like both of these, but, but it's a trade-off. It's interesting, because you get these interesting trade-offs, because you get an empty new facade, it's empty vacant space versus a blank space. And there's downsides and upsides to both of those. It's a very interesting trade-off, because they both create opportunities and constraints around them. And I think that's, that's something we'll have to toy with, as well as how much money we have and how we proceed with doing it. And I've always liked the, the idea of potentially not using our own capital, but using a third-party's capital to build us a city hall and us leasing that space, and maybe with an option to buy in the long term, maybe we can get more bang for our buck without using our own capital. But in terms of Mayor's point, if we do a subcommittee, I'd be willing to participate on that. And then finally, I wanted to hear what the city manager's thoughts on all this so far is.
You know, I actually am also intrigued by both of them. I had one just really technical question for you, Otto, on yours. The red and the blue space, is that new? That's not part of the demo. That's part of the.
That's existing shell.
Okay, all right.
That we would fit up the council, the mayor, and the managers' space within it.
Yeah, that's existing space. Okay.
Okay, Betty?
Okay. I like the idea of grants. I think that's important. Also, the idea that we could sell, if we do sell land across the street, that that could go into the facilities fund. And there may be other places, other things we own that we could sell. We've talked about that before, some people have. But I think above all, well, ultimately, I think that all the departments should come back here, except, especially planning and Public Works and Finance. I don't know about Human Resources, maybe that's the one that has the least need, perhaps, to be connected to the rest. But I think that we should keep in mind that it's for the public. It isn't for us, the building. It would be lovely to be down on the river, but that's not as accessible to the public as this location is. And I think, I also think it's really important to stay near county government. It's all for the, for the interests of the public, not for, not for the city council and the city manager and the mayor. So I, I would like us to forget about E-Web. I think, I think they should, I think it'd be great if they stay where they are, but this is really much more accessible, especially for people who don't have cars. That's, it's very difficult to ride a bus downtown and get over to the E-Web site at night. That's all. Thank you.
George Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I just had one, one brief comment. All these plans are intriguing. As of now, I'm kind of favoring saving it, though, I mean, without more information and more discussion. And doing the rebuild, I like that idea. I think that you save money doing that, and yet you're still flexible. You shell it, you make the outside that we're not using look acceptable, you've seismically updated it, and you can move a department back in at a time. Who knows? Maybe somebody might want to lease some of that space, too, you know, before, before the city departments move back in, if that's the way we decided to go. So I don't know. I think, I think that's pretty sensible, and actually would, looks like it would save a fair amount of money, too.
So just a couple of comments before we wrap this up. One is that I just want to reiterate that in, in most places that I've been that have nice space around a city hall, people do hang out around, I mean, they use it as public space. They like to go there and be there. So having a nice space around our city hall that's attractive and people can use, it seems like it's important. It also seems to me really important, having been here this last eight years, that we have a city hall that is a great symbol for our community, that really speaks to who we are as a community. And that brings me back to Alan's comment and the discussion about how efficient this building is and how sustainable it is and all of that, that I, you know, this is, this is a time when, again, another exercise, are we, are, do we speak hypocrisy or do we walk our talk? And so I think when we have all these goals about how, the way we think things ought to be, that this is our moment to do our piece, and we've got to find a way to, to do that. So that just seems really important. Otherwise, all these things that we've been having coming out of our mouth about zero waste and all of that doesn't mean anything if, when it gets down to it, we don't do it ourselves. I know that's not always easy, but I do think it's important for us to walk our talk. And I do think that the chances are that once we know what we're going to put here, and you paint that picture for the community, that it will be easier for other people to see where they might want to put something right next to it or adjoining it. And things will come along, as we've seen downtown. When people see things happening, they see something, they have a vision of something that they might want to do right next to it or right with it. So I think we should, we should sort of assume that in an optimistic way as we move forward, that that possibility is likely to be there, because we've seen that happen over and over again. This has been, in my opinion, a very, for us, and everybody said it really well, but I just have been a very optimistic conversation, doable, and that's what we wanted to have out of this conversation. Alan said he'd be happy to be part of a subcommittee. Anybody , Mike, is interested?
If we, if we're going to do one.
If we're going to do one, but I think, you can say no, but my, my desire right now, I think it would be great if we had a subcommittee of council to kind of walk through the stuff on the in-between meetings to kind of help us move through the process more rapidly, if possible. So.
I think we should do one. I'd like to watch.
If we heeded on it, it would be shorter. Get through a lot quicker. You'd have a short timeline.
Let me know, okay?
I'll do it if you set one, if we have to.
I'd like to, I'd like to support what Counselor Brown said, is I think, as I said when we were sort of going through things, that design really starts with a concept. And my guess is, is all, this is not a competition, by the way. What it does say is, maybe it provides the nucleus for the counselors, the manager, the community, to decide what is this thing, is that if we're going to move all of the back to the site in segments, in increments, that's a different way of looking at how you would make the building, or whether you leave the frame and use it for future, or build a new frame as you do it through the thing. But the point is, if it's going to be a ceremonial place and office building someplace else, or a ceremonial place and a campus of function in downtown, that's a concept. And it seems to me, whether it's that way, that way, that way, that way, that way, or another one, it's still going to start with the concept. And it seems to me that when they did the new building, the 100 and something million dollar new building, the concept was, we're going to all be in one place, and it's going to be a ceremony on a very special place. And, you know, unfortunately for Eugene, we couldn't afford it. But at the same, I do think the concept is where good ideas come from.
Agreed.
That's what I said.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.